Welcome everyone to the April 24th Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors Meeting. If you could all stand for a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Before the start of this meeting, the Board of Supervisors held an executive session at 6:30 where we discussed litigation with Federation Housing and we also discussed personnel. The Board of Supervisors also held a workshop starting at 7:00 or 8:00 where we had discussed many things. We had gone over traffic concerns out in front of the Phoenix Swim Club. We had spoke about putting up no parking signs along the alleyway by the Sunoco 7-Eleven guys bicycles in the grassy area. We once again spoke about the Speed Hump project that the township is considering. Mr. Ryan spoke about the amusement tax. He referred to the Act 172 rebate for our first responders. Mr. Coppins had also spoke about our 2024 road paving list. Now moving on, tonight our first thing on the agenda is Proclamation Resolution 2024-17 honoring Susan Cummings. At this time, the Board and the community are truly honored to have Susan Cummings here tonight. Mrs. Cummings was a respected and valued member of this very Board and other Boards, as Mrs. Bowman will be reading shortly. Unfortunately, as life sometimes changes directions for all of us, Mrs. Cummings had retired and moved out of the state. Susan, we as a township and a community would like to thank you for everything you've done for all of us, and it was my pleasure to serve with you. At this time, Mrs. Bowman, would you like to do the honor and read the proclamation, please?
Absolutely. Can you hear me? All right. Proclamation Resolution 2024-17. Whereas Lower Southampton Township is a township of the second class in the County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority vested in it by the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Southampton does hereby resolve as follows. Whereas the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania established the organic law of the township by enacting the second-class township act code, Act of 1933, May 1st, PL 013, Article 1, Section 101 et cec., as amended, and whereas the said code provides that the general supervision of all affairs of the township shall be in the hands of five registered electors of the township who shall be named Township Supervisor, and whereas Susan was elected to serve on the Board of Supervisors in 2019 and most recently served as the Secretary Treasurer, and whereas Susan is retiring after more than 16 years of service to the residents of Lower Southampton Township, and whereas Susan has also retired from her position at Bucks County in the Register of Wills and Clerks of Orphan Court Office, and whereas Susan devoted 12 years to the Nishamini School Board, serving from 2003 until 2015. Susan shared in the decision-making to renovate sections of Nishamini High School, constructing a state-of-the-art facility, completed in 2009. Susan also helped create the district-wide plan to match the student population needs with the number of buildings in the district and modernized all buildings to improve early childhood education. And whereas Susan was then elected to the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors and served from 2020 to 2024, where she worked diligently with fellow supervisors to serve the community. And whereas Susan has been a township resident since 1984. Susan has been married to her husband Perry for over 40 years and has two children, Casey, her son, and Kristen, her daughter. Susan has three wonderful grandchildren, Casey James and Eloise and Brooks. And now therefore do we, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Southampton, honor Susan Cummings and express our thanks for all her conscientious service and dedication to the residents of Lower Southampton Township. We wish her well in her retirement.
Beautiful, beautiful, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a motion as read by Mrs. Bowman?
That's a lot.
I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Parrotano. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Castle. I don't see any reason for further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Done. Now, Mrs. Cummings, if you could please come forward, the Board is going to sign your proclamation, and then we will break for a few moments too, everyone. Take a couple photos.
Thank you. Thank you for the kind words. I enjoyed being on the Board for all the years, and I will miss it. It was a pleasure to serve the community, and I was honored to be selected as one of the Board of Supervisors. I welcome Mrs. Bowman into the seat, so it's nice to see you here, Cindy, and thank you again.
Thank you again. Thank you so much. And once again, we will break for a few minutes. That was terrific. Thank you, everyone, and it's good to see you, Mr. Cummings, out there. Thank you very much for coming and a lot of other close friends of Susan's, so it's terrific. Thank you. All right. At this time, I would like to open the floor to public comment. If you please approach the podium, state your name, address, and if you could put it in our logbook, and as always, we're going to have a three-minute time limit if anybody would like to come up. I do believe there was a young man a little bit ago, too, who signed in and he means using the restroom.
Did you scare me? Okay, I'm Glenn Stevens. I reside at 345 East Myrtle in Feasterville. I keep asking the same questions, and I never get answers, but the one question is more for your education than mine. The question is why after Mike Italia had a long discussion, which he wrote me an email, so we know it's true, with my neighbor, allowing him to destroy my property, he didn't walk the 15 lousy steps and tell it to me. I think the reason he didn't do it is because if, as soon as I found out, I would have gone over his head, probably to you. So he didn't just take, give the power that he didn't possess to my neighbor to destroy and steal my property. He took the power of me coming to you for help, and he took your power by not letting you know this was going to happen until after the fact. I think there are multiple ramifications that could have come from Mike's action or inaction. Have you ever considered how easily Mike's actions could have led to violence? Has anybody given that any thought at all? So what happens was, he told my neighbor he could destroy and steal my property. Then, by sneaking away without telling me that he had given away my curbing, it could have gotten ugly. Now I'm a 60-year-old guy, I'm nonviolent, I'm not a gun owner, and what if someone else had lived there? Say, this person didn't have all of my knowledge, like, I know that, like Mr. Dillon confirmed, Mike Italia didn't have the authority to give away my curbing. So if this person didn't know that, he might have acted differently. If I didn't have so much faith in law enforcement to come to my aid, maybe I wouldn't. What if this person who entered my house is a member of, is an Army veteran or something, he's got PTSD, just got back from defending his country, and now chooses to defend his rights with violence? It could have easily happened. That's what happens when you give away someone's property and never tell the someone who owns it. It very easily could have happened. Chief Krenn, can you see a possibility where Mike's actions could have ended in violence?
Mr. Stevens, you have 10 seconds left.
I'm sure you can. Anyway, got the stare that kills so much of my time. How about a 30-year-old hothead who's gone through a divorce and has a baseball bat? He could easily walk over and smash this guy in the head, all because Mike didn't have the consideration to let me know that he gave away my property.
Mr. Stevens, you are at your limits, sir. Thank you very much.
Not quite as sure as Hook as the Vice Chairman did in your stead last time, but still.
I have a question for Mr. Stevens.
Yes, Mr. Parrotano.
You know, I've tried to, you know, work through this issue. I've constantly taken up and reviewed the information. Regardless of what your opinion is, at least the facts that the Board members have in front of them is, at least the way I understand it is, is what Mr. Italia did was, is inspect a piece of property where he recognized survey markers and told the gentleman that his property is properly marked, is the way I understand the information. Whether or not he should have came over and talked to you is...
I'm just saying, that was very dangerous.
Yeah, I understand. Is another question. And, you know, I was very concerned when he told me the property was damaged, but, you know, I asked you last time, is if this is true, and you're 100% correct about your property, why have you not taken the suggestion of the Board and tried to get the property surveyed to validate your claim?
Well...
Because this is a civil complaint. I know you think it's criminal, but it's a civil complaint.
Oh, it's criminal. Mr. Dillon blatantly stated that my neighbor does not have the right to steal my property. He blatantly stated on film, I can show it to you, that Mr. Italia does not have the right to give away my property.
Mr. Italia didn't give away your property.
Yes, he did.
In your opinion, he did.
Sir, after, after, after the police came to my assistance, Mr. Italia told him, told the officer not to investigate. He stopped a police investigation.
There's no, there's no proof of that.
Sir, did you not look at the Cop Cam video?
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Can I ask one more question?
No.
Did you not look at the Cop Cam video?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
You did not?
No.
Did anybody look for the Cop Cam video?
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Did anybody look for the Cop Cam video?
I just told you.
We appreciate your time.
Why would you not?
Why would I?
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Because Mike Italia is a god and beyond reproach.
No, he's not.
Mr. Stevens, thank you.
Yes, he is, because it is...
Mr. Stevens, thank you.
Chief Krenn gave you the Cop Cam footage.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
It's a fact, what you just denied. It's a fact.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Further public comment? Anybody else like to come up, please? State your name, your address, and if you could also log it in the book. How are you?
What am I doing here?
Your name, your address logged in the book. If you could also state it at the microphone, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is John Mitchell, 1241 Crescent Avenue, Chrievos, PA.
How are you, Mr. Mitchell? Good to see you, sir.
I'm doing all right. So, I don't have the exact dates. I know the police, though. I had a little altercation with Sergeant Doherty. On his body camera, he explained to me that I'm a target, and I said, yeah, I understand this. I've been a target for the last three years. Like, between Ben Salem and you guys, I've had my house taken, my truck taken. I don't even see a point in working anymore, because every time I build something, it's taken from the police. And I put in a four-year request, and Sergeant Doherty said this in front of four officers. Well, one detective, two officers, the lieutenant knows what was, like, what was going on. Once I asked for a four-year request, the lieutenant played stupid. So I filled out the four-year request. Once I put that complaint and that four-year request in, the sergeant that reviews that called me and told me to look into homeless shelters. So what I gathered from that is, you know, if you're going to make a complaint against our police department, we're going to make you homeless, and we're doing a pretty good job of it. So, I mean, they took my truck and all my tools. Well, they had Ben Salem do that a few days later. And it's on camera. It's on camera. Like, I don't understand. I probably talked to two sergeants, a detective, I don't know, four other officers, and not one officer would do the right thing. Not one. It's on camera. I didn't, I didn't video the conversation I had with Sergeant Doherty, because I thought I was dealing with a grown man and not a child. But what you guys are doing is criminal. Like, you guys are police. You guys break the law to enforce policy. You guys are a disgrace, dude. You're a department.
Mr. Mitchell, please don't refer to our police department as a disgrace. Please.
You guys are breaking, you guys destroyed my life over and over and over. Like, you put that little girl's name on that building over there because you guys had a black eye, right? You put my little sister's name on that building to make your name good. Do the right thing. It's not hard, dude. It's not hard.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Do something about it. Don't act, we'll do something.
I promise I will reach out to Chief Krenn, and I will speak to him about this matter.
Do something, I will remember.
Thank you. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? Absolutely. Hello, Mrs. Plummer, how are you? Good to see you. Always my pleasure.
So, it was, I went to the meetings last year because they were thinking about putting a tower up at the grade school, and I was very happy that you all didn't go through with it, because the reason I'm here is I think there's a lot of towers in our township, and we all live here, and I think that they don't know the danger of it. So they have proven that we're all exposed enough in our own homes between the cellphones, the TVs, our microwaves. So then you add all these towers. So my issue is, there's a tower over there where there's little ones going to school too, which are my grandchildren. And I can show you, if anyone's interested, it's just like five quick-read pages of the dangers of it, especially with little ones, especially if they're like asthmatic, like my grandchild. He's been out of school now for three weeks. We don't know if there's something going on. His asthma's been really bad. So if you would all be kind enough in your hearts, I don't understand why there's so many towers in our town. We live here. I understand that you're doing it for the good to get the money for the kids, but it's a dichotomy, because then it's harming them. They haven't proven the health effects that they're going to do to us. It's high amounts of radiation, and we live here, and our kids live here, and our grandchildren, and I'm very concerned. And if I could just leave a couple copies, if any...
Oh, absolutely.
If you got it, I would appreciate it, because...
Absolutely.
They're too close, even.
Mrs. Plummer, I was running that hearing that you're referring to at the school district, and we did a lot of investigation, you know, on it, and you're right, there's all different types of information out there, things that we learned. One, they're federally regulated, so we have no power to regulate them. Two, the federal government doesn't do their job in regulating them. It's pretty much an open market. I don't believe, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we have any towers on township property. They're all on commercial, just the one?
Yeah.
Just our tower. Just our tower. All the other ones are commercial, they're not on township or even on school district property.
There's one over there, that's what I'm talking about, that's next to the Lower South School.
That, yeah.
That's township.
That's ours.
That's the township's, that's the township's one, as far as, as far as that goes. But some of the research I did at those particular times, and I'm not an authority on it, and one gentleman came up and spoke, but that claimed he was, but some of the research I done is, having this in your pocket exposes you to more radiation than actually the towers, because the towers are up 200 feet in the air, and it's, and it, these are what attracts the radiation to come down to you. So, again, this is research I did. So it is a concern if the federal government does not address it.
They're not going to.
There's nothing we can do about it, because there's laws that prevent us from not allowing certain services in certain areas. Not that, I don't disagree with you, I'm just telling you the issue's more complicated than, than it seems on its face.
But that's good to know. I'll tell everybody that.
Yeah.
Keep the cellphones away from them.
Right. That's what they should do.
That makes sense, but...
And having them up here all the time, too, isn't really good for you either.
Well, I was hoping that they, like, I know it's a lot of the businesses, and they're so close even. Like, even by acne and the bollinale, then you got, and they're toxic, and we're all being exposed, and we all live here.
I don't disagree with you, but...
Okay. Do you mind?
Our hands are tied.
Absolutely. If you wouldn't mind, Mrs. Bowman, thank you, Mrs. Plummer, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? Absolutely. My friend, please come up. If you could state your name, your address, we'd appreciate it. Somebody take the pen, Joe? Just state, state your name and address at the microphone, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Miss?
I think Mr. Stevens will have to defend. I'll probably be getting this.
Okay, the flyer that came out, I'm Joseph Brandal. I moved into the township in 1974 in December. And the township put out a little flyer two weeks ago, I guess it was, about the speed bumps, and I watch them in the morning. I'd get up 6 o'clock in the morning, whether I like it or not, and about 20% of the people stop. The rest of them don't stop. They're either rolling through or they're just flying through. Some of them are flying through, they don't even hit the taillight. You don't even see the taillight. Go on. And it's very dangerous. You've got kids catching buses at 6 o'clock in the morning, which is not good. I feel sorry for the kids. I think someone's going to get hurt. I wish somebody would do something about it. It's not good.
We understand your concerns, Mr. Brandal, we absolutely do, and I appreciate you coming up, telling us this. The Board is very serious about moving forward with what I'm sure you're supporting right now. So we absolutely appreciate you coming up. We can't thank you enough.
Well, thank you, Boarding House, for having me.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Always good seeing you, Mr. and Mrs. Brandal. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? Seeing none, before I move on with the consent agenda, I also just wanted to add, since I forgot, that Mr. Gouda is feeling a little under the weather tonight, our township manager, so that is why Mr. Gouda wasn't here. Speed recovery tone. And to my right, Mr. Hunt is taking over for Mr. Dillon this evening, so thank you very much, Mr. Hunt, for coming. All right, moving on to the consent agenda now. Line item one, A, approval of minutes, April 10th, 2024. B, approval of accounts payable, April 24th, 2024. C, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, April 24th, 2024. Do we have a motion? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adopt the consent agenda for tonight's meeting, April 24th, 2024. Very good. We have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. Line item two, consider adoption of ordinance 610, adopting the 2018 edition of the International Fire Code. Mr. Italia, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. This will be updating us from the 2015 code series into the 2018 International Fire Code. It's just that technology moves, the code moves, so that brings us a little bit more up to date, and it's amended so it doesn't conflict with state law.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Italia, for that. So the motion would read, to adopt ordinance 610, adopting the 2018 edition of the International Fire Code. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Rottinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5 to 0. Line item number three, consider adoption of ordinance 610, adopting the 2018 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code. Mr. Italia, sir, once again.
Yeah, that'll be ordinance 611, just for clarification.
611, I apologize.
Not a problem. Same narrative as before, updating it, current codes. Not much changes with property maintenance, but we do go into that book a lot, so we want to make sure we're on the latest and greatest there.
All right. Very good then. Thank you, Mr. Italia. So the motion would read, to adopt ordinance 611, adopting the 2018 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code. Do we have a motion? Motion?
Motion.
I'll second. Mr. Parrotano made the motion, Mr. Castle made the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5 to 0. Line item number four, consider adoption of Resolution 2024-18 regarding the intergovernmental reimbursement agreement with Upper Southampton Township for the repaving of Stump Road as part of the 2024 road paving program. Mr. Hunt or possibly Mr. Everett, would one or two gentlemen like to jump in here?
I can, well, John, I don't want to take, steal your thunder. That's the way that works? All right. Good to know. This is a resolution between Lower Southampton Township and Upper Southampton Township. This particular resolution is with regards to Stump Road, which is a roadway that is shared between the two townships, and in particular, this relates back to, I believe, it's a stipulation from the early '90s between the two townships, where they agreed to share the cost on a couple of roads, but in particular for tonight, it would be with regards to this Stump Road, sharing of the cost for that repaving.
All right. Very good. Mr. Everett, how did you do? Fine. All right. Very good. All right. So the motion would read, to adopt Resolution 2024-18, authorizing the appropriate offices of the Township of Lower Southampton to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Upper Southampton Township for the repaving of Stump Road as part of the 2024 raid, road paving program. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, boy, that's a, that's a close one there.
I'll pay you for it.
We'll, we'll give it to the young lady to my right, Mrs. Bellman. And the second was made by Mr. Ottinger. Does the board have any discussion?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. I've been around long enough that, over the decades, we did not have the best working relationship with Upper Southampton. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity that we can partner with our neighbors who, hundreds of years ago, we were all one, one township. And I'm happy that we can work hand in hand with our neighbors to our northwest.
Great. I totally agree. Thank you, Mr. Castle. So, we had the first, we had the motion. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Line item number five, consider approval of the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Upper Southampton Township for paving of Stump Road as part of the 2024 road paving program. Mr. Hunt, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Given the board's approval of the previous resolution, this is the actual contractual agreement between Upper Southampton Township and Lower Southampton Township that codifies this arrangement, that the cost of repaving the roadway known as Stump Road, that is shared by the two townships, the cost of doing that repaving will also be shared 50-50 between the townships. And this is the agreement binding both townships to that agreement.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. So, the motion would read to approve the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Upper Southampton Township for the repaving of the Stump Road as part of the 2024 road paving program, and to authorize the township manager to sign the documents. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five all. Line item number six, consider authorizing the township manager to sign the TE 160 PennDOT form for the flashing LED sign permit. So, basically what this is, is, you know, throughout the township, many people have now noticed that there's flashing stop signs. And this just helps, this is a requirement that PennDOT gives us to keep us in the compliance. So, this is something that we really should consider passing. So, with that said, the motion would read to authorize the township manager to sign the TE 160 PennDOT form for the flashing, flashing LED sign permit. Make sure that the township stays in compliance with PennDOT's recommendations. And do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perrotto. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Line item number seven, consider appointment to the planning commission board. So, unfortunately, one of our longtime members, Claire, on the board for the planning board had, has left us. And we, we congratulated her, we thanked her for all her time and effort to the board. But at this point, the township has to appoint a new member. We advertised the opening. We received one letter of interest, a gentleman by the name of Ray Hines, who's lived in our township for many years. Terrific fellow. And at this time, I would like to put a motion on the floor to appoint Mr. Ray Hines to the planning commission board for a term ending January 1st, 2025. We have a motion. Now, I would ask for a second.
Second.
Second to Mr. Castle. Any further discussion from the board on this?
I just want to go and record, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Hines is a resident for 47 years, which is outstanding. He has three children. He, his children attend the Shammany School District, and he has a deep interest in our community, and it's going to be an honor to appoint him.
Absolutely. Right. So, we have a first, we have a second. Any, any other discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Hines. We appreciate your, your interest in the township. Thank you. Line item number eight, consider authorizing friends of the Lower Southampton Library to the use of the parking lot for a book sale. So, this is something that the library had came to the township. They, they had asked the township in regards to the use. I personally don't see an issue with this. The library's trying to earn a little revenue for their needs, which I always, you know, commend them for. I do have one question with Mr. Coppins. Mr. Coppins, do you see any issues with where they would like to set up? Will the public works department help them maybe, you know, rope off, make a, you know, create a safe area? If you could just give me a couple comments.
Yeah, I don't see an issue from where they, they want to set up. Public Works will be able to drop off some barricades for them on that Friday and supply them with some caution tape, so they can set up and tape off the area that they're looking to have the sale, the book sale and your sale in.
Okay. That's terrific. Thank you, Mr. Coppins, for that. So, the motion would read to authorize friends of the Lower South, Lower Southampton Library to use the library's parking lot for a book sale Saturday, June 1st, 2024, with a rain date of June 8th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion?
Just a comment, yes, Chairman. Our Lower Southampton Township Library does a phenomenal job. They're not necessarily trying to make money, but they're turning over books and replacing them with newer books. And my daughter checks out about 10 books a week, my granddaughter, and I'm sure she's going to be first in line. So, this is just a great thing that our library does for us, and they, they should be acknowledged.
Thank you. Would you like to say that over again with your microphone on?
Our library is wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Castle. So, we had a motion, we had a, a motion, we had a second. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, Board. Moving on to managers' report. Mr. Mahal, I hear you are the man tonight, sir.
I'm here. Township cleanup day was just past Saturday. Want to thank our 60 volunteers who came out, State Representative Joe Hogan's office, Feastable Business Association, Giant Supermarket, the Plow Mickey Farm Foundation, and multiple residents, along with Supervisor Castle, were out Saturday. It was a great event. The sanitation rebates from February 8th to May 31st. As of the close of business Monday, we have given back $50,000 and 100, $50,100 in rebates.
That's terrific. Well, ready then. Moving on to supervisors' comments. Mrs. Bellman, I'll start with you this evening. Ladies first.
I just want to remind everybody, you know, it's warming up out there. Baseball season started, kids are out on their bikes. I know we had an incident on street road a couple of days ago involving a child on a bike. Please keep track of where your kids are. Be careful out there when you're traveling on our roadways, especially during the spring and the summer months. I just want the community to know, be aware, kids are outside, they're playing in the street, they're riding their bikes. Everybody needs to slow down. We need to slow down. There's nowhere you need to go. You can't make up time on the road. If you're running late and you're speeding, you're not going to make up the time on the road. So, everyone needs to just slow down. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bellman. Mr. Perrotto, sir.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to all the residents that showed up at cleanup day and helped beautify our, our community, as well as our, I know Mr. Castle was there.
I was.
Doing, doing a good job. Mrs. Cummings, how are you? I just want to say that it's, it's been my pleasure to have, have the opportunity to work with Mrs. Cummings on the school board. She was an invaluable person of reason and understanding, always putting the kids and the taxpayers of our districts first, and really cared about not only what she was doing, but how she was doing it. She's, she was a class act, and I know she was a class act also on this board, and she's just one of those beautiful people in the world. And she's done also so much for my family, so I just want to say, well deserved, and we'll miss you, and I love you. So, thank you.
Oh.
I want my comment.
Too late. Mr. Ottinger, sir.
I typically now say, I have nothing to say tonight, but, Ms. Cummings, same thing. I think that we spent way too much time together at meetings late at night and... It's got to be at least 15 years of, you know, serving the community. So, enjoy your retirement.
And we are going to throw this back at Mrs. Bellman again, or she's going to, she's going to hit me with a water bottle.
I'm sorry. Mr. Brandell distracted me with kid safety. Kid safety, I, I hear you, because it's, I'm very passionate about that as well. But, sorry, Sue. I'm sad to see you go. Stay. You're still here. I know. You've been a great mentor. If it wasn't for Sue, I probably wouldn't be involved as much as I am in the community. She pulled me in when I was working as a parent advocate in the Shammany School District. So, to that I thank you, because you, you made me realize my passion, and thank you, and stay in touch. So, enjoy retirement. But thank you for all your years of service to the community.
Mr. Castle, sir, I believe you have something to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a word or two. Thank you, everyone in the audience tonight that has took the time to come out and support your community and to hold us accountable. To those who are watching from home, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to serve. I had a great time on Saturday. Mr. Jenkinson over here, he was one of my partners, and we picked up numerous bags of trash just in one isolated area. And it was a great time, and I would hope that more community people come out and, and help. It's going to make our community a nicer place. First Fridays are starting. Lower Southampton, we just had an event, you know, a week or two ago. That was a great time. Our Parks and Recreation has a great program. Most residents get a little book that gets mailed to them. It's the Southampton Spirit. There's a page in there. There are things going on all summer, every week, for every age group. So, please, look at the prams that are available. They're all different ages. And finally, Ms. Cummings, it was a pleasure sitting next to you, having our chats. It's not that we didn't see eye to eye on some things, but you gave a different perspective that opened my eyes. And that's one of the most things that I enjoyed about you. It's not just about my view. And so, we, we agreed on 99% of this stuff, but you always presented a different perspective, which made me think. And so, I'm a better person because of you. So, I want to thank you very much. And finally, we have a drug takeback day on April 27th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Our drop-off location will be Procressing Middle School. And if you need information, please sign up to our emails, which come in once a week, Mr. Chairman, I yield back the time.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. And I'll wrap it up. First off, thanking all the voters who came out yesterday on Election Day. You know, this country has the freedoms that we have because of that right. You know, many, many times when I've been out on the, the road and I talk to different people from different countries, people that were born and raised here, the one thing we can all agree on is the liberties, the freedoms we have in this country. And it's because, you know, it's, it's because of a lot of different things, but, you know, ultimately, if people don't take interest, go out and vote, what will we have at that point? You know, you, you got to go out and vote. So, thank everyone once again for all that. And Mrs. Cummings, oh my gosh, if we could take you back in a heartbeat, we would. I just don't understand why you'd want to move to Florida with Perry. You know, I think, I think you should stay on the board with us. But, see, you've done everything. You know, you've, you've conquered everything, you've climbed every mountain, and I can't thank you enough for everything you've done. And most importantly to me, I can call you my friend. And I want to thank you for always being there for me and everybody else. You've touched a lot of lives. Thank you very much. With that said, Board, at this time, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Adjourned.
We have a motion. Do we, do we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castle. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. See you again May 8th. Thank you.